Thank you. Welcome to our city council meeting, our regular meeting. It is Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, and it is 7:00 PM. We'd like to welcome all of you that are in person, and those of you that are joining us on YouTube Live tonight. We'd like, we have four of the council members here. Those of you may not know that our fifth council member resigned at our last council meeting, and so we're in the process of taking applications for the new council member to be, I think we have that the 23rd, so next Tuesday, right? We'll be choosing a new council member.
At 6:00 PM.
Yes, at 6:00 PM. So, we'll begin by a pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone here willing to lead us in that?
I will, Mayor. Please stand and repeat after me.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Miller. We'd also like to have an invocation or inspirational thought. Is there anyone here willing to do that for us tonight? I'll do. Our heavenly Father, as we bides before thee this evening, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet in this city council meeting. We're grateful for the city that we live in, for the good people that are here, for those who work hard to be kind and to help their neighbors. We pray that thou wilt be with us this night as we make the decisions that are on the agenda, that they will be correct with thee and with those within our city that will affect. We're grateful for the country we live in and the freedoms we enjoy. We pray that we'll always be worthy of those freedoms, that we'll be able to do those things that are best for not only our country, but our state and our community. We're grateful again for thee, and we ask thy Spirit to be here this evening. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest with anything on the agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict or declaration on item 14. I'm one of those nine houses that we'll discuss.
Thank you. I also need to declare that I am an employee of VanCon only, and not any ownership of that, and VanCon has a contract with the city right now. So, if there aren't any others, we will go into our consent agenda. We have the minutes of our council meeting of November 2nd, 2021. Has the council had an opportunity to read those? And if you have, is there any additions or corrections? Okay. Also, we have the bills, the invoice register of November 12th, 2021, of $392,314.23. Any questions or concerns on the bills? Okay. We also have three items on the consent agenda. The first is Resolution 11-03-2021, a resolution declaring surplus property. And also, item four, Resolution 11-05-2021, OSA Annual Fraud Risk Assessment. And item number five, the canvas election results of 2021 municipal general election. I'm sure each of you have looked at those three items as well. Any questions or concerns on those? Okay, if not, I look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Miller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilman Hathaway. Any further discussion on these resolutions and the consent agenda? If not, Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
And Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Thank you. It was unanimous. Public forum. Do we have anybody sign up, Aaron? Okay. All right, Leroy Kinder, come on up. State your name, please, and you have five minutes.
Leroy Kinder, I didn't see on the agenda where we were supposed to talk about, give public comment about the new ATV ordinance. Is this when I would do that?
No. Well, you can. You can talk about it if you want. Yeah, it's just an agenda item, so there isn't any public comment during that.
Right. There's no public hearing on this, if you want to make a comment.
Yeah, if you want to, this is the place.
Oh, you bet. So, if I pointed the screen or something like that, I'm not pointing at anybody in particular. I talk with my hands. I apologize about that. So, in regards to this, this new ordinance, just kind of wondering if we've done our due diligence to see if there's anything quantifiable at all of where this should be the resolution that even with the certification, the ATV certification that kids get, things like that, of riding their ATVs on the street, is one of the reasons why a lot of us moved to Santaquin. I mean, we do have some kids. I don't have a lot of respect for that type of stuff, and they try to ruin it for everybody else, but have we checked with law enforcement on, you know, how many calls? Is it the same kids? Is it the same parents who are monitoring their kids and things like that? And just, you know, is this absolute, the absolute what we want to do, as with the city council and that, to keep the kids off the street? I just don't, you know, where I live, I just don't see a lot of them flying up and down the road, and there's an awful lot of them that ride around my house and things like that. I trailer mine and head out of town. I don't ride them around town. I ride at the church every now and again. My kids don't really ride them on the road, but I enjoy seeing kids out there doing these things, riding their ATVs. I mean, I've seen a lot of our own kids out there, and so just making sure we're doing our due diligence and seeing if this is the only recourse, and if not, if we could explore some other options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(Inaudible)
Yes, it was just what I was going to do, is ask if there's anybody else that would like to talk. Please state your name.
My name's Kirk Christiansen. I have the same comment as the previous gentleman in regards to the OHV law change. So, I actually just jotted some notes down, or I'm just going to read it. That way, I kind of don't fumble through what I want to say. But, "I wanted to voice my opinion tonight in the proposed change of the OHV laws, particularly the requirement for required license to operate an off-highway vehicle. I am as strongly opposed to this change as I can state, not just this particular change, but really the whole attitude around changing something like this. It's not just this one law, but kind of the idea and principle that follow it. I think it's a serious step in the wrong direction for the community, for Santaquin as a whole. I moved to Santaquin about a year and a half ago. I grew up in Delta, just down the way, small town. Spent some time out in California, working and whatnot, moved back here with my couple little kids, decided we wanted to settle in somewhere we would like to stay for long term. I work in Spanish Fork, which is Santaquin for very specific reasons. I actually told my wife, "How far south can we move?" And she said, "Santaquin's as far as I want to go south." And I said, "Santaquin it is then." And I did that because I liked the lifestyle, the community, the small town, the privileges we have as a small town, and I think this is just stripping some of those freedoms that we enjoy away. I'm sure I'm not the only one in the community who is here and wants to be here for things like this, for the ability to go out and ride. I see it all the time in our community. A kid cruises by pulling his lawn mower or whatever to do chores at people's houses, his summer jobs. I see a dad with three kids tagging along behind him on their motorcycles, heading up the canyon. Those are the type of reasons I moved to Santaquin, to enjoy those privileges, to have those things in my life, for that lifestyle, and I'm sure I'm not the only one who feels that way. But, I do understand, there's obviously going to be reckless kids. I mean, that can't be avoided. Kids will be kids, and I'm not saying it's okay, but I just don't think because of a few kids who are not doing what they're supposed to, we should strip our privilege from everyone, and not just kids either, also citizens. I mean, there's sour apples, kids are sour apples and citizens complaining. People like to complain about all kinds of things, so I don't think we should let those few who have a few issues with stuff take it away from everyone else. And I just think there's a disconnect here between the council and the community on this law change. I really don't think this is something the community of Santaquin wants. I understand, maybe there's accidents and things that was brought up, but that doesn't necessarily mean we need to change the lifestyle that we want to have here. So, I'm strongly opposed to it. I don't think I'm the only one, so I think there needs to be another solution around this as well, other than changing the code. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get your name?
Kirk Christiansen.
Yes.
Ask me how I remember that. Let's go ahead and read the one that was sent in by email, if that's okay.
Okay. I wanted to clarify, we generally don't read public comment emails in the public forum. We do for the public hearings, but this gentleman called in and requested, and I said I could ask the mayor, and the mayor gave his approval. So, his name is Corey Preston, and he says, "Good evening. I am unable to attend the meeting tonight due to the other community obligations my wife and I have this evening. I do hope that this message can be relayed on my behalf, however. I grew up in a small town and moved to Santaquin to raise my children in the same lifestyle I enjoyed. That being said, I understand the points that have been made by some citizens in the police department. However, I answer the same calls they do as a member of the fire EMS departments when someone gets hurt, and don't feel as though everyone should be punished for the mistakes of a few. I also understand that there are nuisance calls for noise and frequency. I have on occasion wanted to report something, someone riding too fast or without a muffler, but I've not done so out of fear that the police department would throw their hands up at the problem and tell the mayor and council, 'No more.' As far as I'm concerned, these youth have the same responsibilities to follow laws and rules as their older siblings or parents that may be driving a car. If someone in the neighborhood has a problem with how someone is driving a car, they call the police. If the police department catches them committing an offense, a citation may be issued. Why not the same be done in the case of a youth on an ATV?" People move to towns like this, so they don't have to live in a city, so they can enjoy a different way of life, so that they have opportunities that bigger cities don't offer. This town and council have made, long made the comments that they wish the youth to find something worthwhile to do. Riding ATVs is one that my son and his friends have found to be rewarding and available at a moment's notice. If they want to go fishing at the mouth of the canyon, they grab their poles and go. If they want to go ride the trails, they go. They have also found it to be easier to provide services for those in our community, just like we did this past Saturday, as award fall cleanup of five homes in our neighborhood. There is a matter of convenience as well when it comes to church, youth, and sports obligations as well, and being able to make sure everyone is everywhere they need to be. I know every parent thinks their kids are safer even when they aren't looking, but we demand of our boys in this neighborhood, they've all taken the rider's course, they wear helmets, and aren't allowed to get out of second gear while on pavement, and this keeps them to approximately 15 miles an hour. They ride with lights on towards the shoulder of the road. I sincerely hope that you, as a council, will consider allowing these youth the opportunity to enjoy something they love and not let the actions of a very few ruin it all. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Aaron. Thank you, Corey Preston, for that. Okay, that ends. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? No takers. All right. We will move on with our agenda then. We have an appointment that was to be made. I met with Keela Gowdy recently, and she's a member of our Community Services Board, but her term is coming to an end, and she would like to continue with that, and so I would like to nominate her as an appointment to serve another three-year term on the Community Service Board. So, I present Keela to that, and I look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion.
Hang on, let's have Keela come up. Do you want to say anything?
Sorry.
Sure. You don't want to say?
We're not just going to take his word.
Yeah, they're not taking my word for it.
Well, prior to being on this, what's this thing called, Community Service? I'm a little flustered. I was on the museum board, and then when that was dissolved, I became the member of this, and I've really enjoyed this past year, being on that committee. We've met most every month, and it's been a good experience, and I think the people that are on the committee are a good mix, and I would like to thank, being the oldest person on the committee, that I bring a little bit to that committee to give some insight of things, you know, Santaquin from the past. I'm a big proponent of the museum, and that's under the umbrella of this committee as well, and so I'm very happy to continue. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Now I can accept the motion.
Are we sure?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve a term on the Community Services Board for three years. Are they three years?
Yes.
For Keela Gowdy.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Councilman Meacham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Keela. You don't have to stay if you don't want to.
All right, thank you.
All right. Is Payson, Santaquin Area Chamber of Commerce here?
I don't see.
Okay, we'll wait on that then. Okay, we have a form of public hearing, a public hearing to allow public input regarding, A, the issuance and sale of not more than $11,500,500 aggregate principal amount for water revenue bonds, of water revenue bonds, Series 2021, the bonds, and B, any potential economic impact that the project described herein to be financed with the proceeds of the bonds issued under the Act may have on the private sector and related matters. So, I look for a motion to go into that public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Hathaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Ben, tell us what's going on.
You've read that.
I think you already had it.
Yep. This is for the tank in the booster pump station out in Summit Ridge. It'll take the last third of our community off an irrigation source, or a culinary source, and move it to an irrigation source, which is very good water-wise planning, and it's before the public and you for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right. I look for a motion. We got to go back into the regular meeting. What's on the agenda later?
Did anybody sign up for the public hearing?
Yeah, was there any comments from the public on this public hearing? Okay. We'll close the public hearing then. I look for a motion to go back into our council meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Meacham. Do you have a second?
I'll second him, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. All right, item eight, we have another public hearing on the Foothill Village vacating of nine parcels. I look for a motion to go into that public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Meacham. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Hathaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Norm, are you going to tell us about that one, or is Ben?
You want me to take this?
Sure.
So, mayor and council, in the Foothill Village subdivision on Foothill Village Boulevard, which is one of the main roads that goes through the subdivision, there was a trail planned on the quasi-north-east side of the road, and that trail has subsequently moved to the southeast side of the road. If you scroll down just a little bit farther, Ben, you'll see that there's a large park right there, about a one-and-a-half acre park that's going to be right there. It was thought that the trail would work better on that side of the road, and so it was moved in subsequent phases, and so this would basically deed back the property from, that the city owns, for where a trail would have been placed. Now the trail being moved to the other side, so the city has no need for these pieces of property. They're about 10 feet long in the depth of the lot. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. It's fairly straightforward. Again, the purpose for it was a trail that's now been moved to the other side, and we have plenty of room for it over there and dedication for it over there. We just, this is excess property that we don't need, and that the homeowners will ultimately have to take care of anyway through our ordinances as far as taking care of most park strips.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments?
We're in the public hearing, right?
Yes. All right. Any comments from the public? All right. We'll close the public hearing, and I look for a motion to go back into our council meeting.
So moved.
And Mayor, we just want to clarify that this motion and the last motion, and it wasn't just to go back in the regular meeting, but to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, yes. Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Meacham. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Montoya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. All right. Building permits, business license report.
Yeah, mayor and council, just my regular report. So, building-wise, year-to-date, we are up to 508 new residential dwelling units. That makes up 267 single-family and 241 multifamily. Again, it's always interesting to look at where we were this time last year, which was 338, so growth has been significantly more this year than it was last year. If you see where we were year-to-date last year and where we ended up being, there still was, you know, what, close to 100 permits that were issued. So, we don't see that there's necessarily any difference in the trend of homes, so that number will probably still go up in the last month and a half that we have in this calendar year. So, this just continues to illustrate the amount of growth that's happening in the area. In terms of business licenses, we have two new ones. Scroll down, Ben. We got the Beauty by Cars, owned by Carson &amp; Biggs, at 774 East 400 South, which is eyelash extensions, and then Geist Dynamics, Nicholas S. Maurer, 368 North Center Street, which is firearms manufacturing. So...
I have a question about that one, if I may. Are they actually manufacturing on-site, or is that just where, like, the headquarters of the company is going to be? Is it zoned for, that that's a permitted use to do actual manufacturing in that zone?
So, I would have to go back and look at the details of the business licenses there. My recollection is, and I know a number of departments sign off on it, and I know this one was one that we make sure we got the background check taken care of. I think this was like a home occupation, so it's, I think this one was related to selling of firearms and things related to that. So, firearms manufacturing might be a little bit misleading. It's not like a big facility or anything like that, but it might be more of specialty things done within the home.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to discourage any home occupations or businesses. I just want to make sure that they're in an appropriate location and, you know, yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments on building permits? All right, if not, our new business. We have our ordinances, item number 10, ordinance 11-01-2021, OHV requiring licensed drivers. Dennis?
Mayor and council, appreciate the public comment that's been delivered tonight, certainly pertinent to this subject. Quick, very brief background of where we've been with the OHV regulations. We recognize that for the longest time, the city had very limited regulations, really almost none at all, to the point that there was concern, again, by citizens about the few instances of OHV abuse or nuisances in neighborhoods and the safety concerns. And the ordinances were changed to permit people on ATVs to be able to traverse through the city on designated routes to be able to get to public lands, because we know the Forest Service lands, the public roads that are there, a lot of people want to get to those and drive their OHVs on those. And the growing concern became, well, yes, there was only certain designated routes, but they're still being used everywhere, and again, issues with noise and safety and concerns that way. And then the state started getting more involved with OHV ATV regulation, and they started drafting codes that the cities have to abide by with regards to use on the highways and the freeways. And there, at the legislative level, they continue to make small changes here and there, and really, this ordinance, the majority of this ordinance is trying to react to what the state's been dictating to us as far as changes that they've been making. And also, in the process of going through our ordinances and trying to just clean them up, make them easier to read and understand. And so, I'll walk you through this as what I can a little bit tonight and for the public benefit, so they can understand what changes are being made where and why. Under Section 1, the definition section, all of these changes are made because these are changes that the state has made to the state code. They added a definition for all-terrain type 3 vehicles, and modified several definitions to include that term. The other element that the state has been getting involved with is what they call "street legal" all-terrain vehicles, and dictating what standards those vehicles need to have physically on the vehicle in order to be considered "street legal." And so, here again, we've added that same definition to our codes by this ordinance. Under the next section of this ordinance, this is more cleanup within our own ordinance. You can see the title of this section is "Operation of Off-Highway Vehicles on Public Streets," and looking through the ordinances, there were different regulations in different places and other sections that pertain to operation on public streets. And so, most of what you're seeing here as far as new text is not actually new regulation, it's just being moved into this section because that's where it's most pertinent, based on the title. Number two, you see there's a lot of language that's stricken there with regards to permission from landowners. That language, though it's stricken here in this section, is really just being moved into a different section of the code, where again, it's more pertinent in another section. But under number two, this is the one new line of code that really is the most significant change to the regulations, and was alluded to earlier tonight by several members of the public, and that is, "Operation of Off-Highway Vehicles on Public Streets may only be performed by persons who have a valid motor vehicle operator's license." So, basically, if you're going to be driving a vehicle on a city street, then you have to have a, in a sense, a driver's license and be able to operate with that. So, that's the one line of this whole ordinance that is the most significant change to the whole thing. Under numbers, or paragraphs 3, 4, and 5 under that, these are again existing regulations that we've moved into here with one difference, and that is, under number four, you see the regulation says, "Non-street legal ATV shall not exceed 15 miles per hour." That is an existing regulation on our books, but the next part of that is that "Street legal vehicles may operate within posted speed limits." That is a new addition to the regulations, which again, is trying to accommodate or recognizing if it's street legal, then it has the right to be there and operate on the highway, and as long as they're operating within posted speed limits, that would be fine. So, number four is a, I guess you would say with this ordinance, is an enhancement of rights of ATV drivers on public streets if they have street legal vehicles. The next section, section number three, again, this was just taking, again, cleaning up, clarifying, moving some language from one section to another, just for ease of reading that. Section four, this again is another clarifying, where it says, "No person shall operate an off-highway vehicle on any public land or street." The reason why we're adding "or street" is because the definition of public land does not include streets, and so, again, it's a clarifier that if you're going to be operating on public land or streets, then you have to meet the registration requirements. Number, section five is, again, is looking at clarifying language. "No person may operate an off-highway vehicle on any public land or trail without having a valid motor vehicle operator's license or the approved safety certificate." The reason why we struck "street or highway" from this section... The reason why we struck "street or highway" from this section is because we have, or I talked about section one above that addresses operating on streets. We didn't want there to be conflicts of intent between the language of what they can do on the streets versus what they can do on public lands and trails. And so, that's that changed there. I think the next section. This is, again, trying to try to match the state code. The state code requires that if you're operating or riding upon ATVs, you have to have helmets on. And so, we've added some language to be more consistent with the state code there. The last, or the paragraph two under that section, the state's also been getting involved with the use of ATVs for husbandry agricultural purposes. And so, we've added language here to, again, be more consistent with the state code that if somebody's in the act of, or they're performing agricultural functions using their ATV, the state code exempts them from having to have their helmets and other things. And so, we're saying, all the exemptions that the state code provides for using ATVs for agricultural husbandry purposes, we're also adopting those same regulations. So, that's what that one does. And then the last one, we recognize that this was an interesting one. Under the current laws of the city, technically, somebody cannot operate an ATV during daylight hours in the city because of the way the language reads in our current ordinance. And so, we know that's not the intent. And again, we're clarifying some language that says they can't operate, they just can't operate between sunset and sunrise. So, basically nighttime hours, which is consistent with, again, state code and the regulations they have there. So, again, most of this ordinance is trying to become more consistent, trying to clarify what our regulations are, and trying to, again, open up where we can the rights of those who have ATVs. But the one significant limitation that's being put or introduced with this ordinance is that requirement that if you're going to be operating an ATV or an OHV on a public street, that you would have to have a state-issued vehicle operator's permit or license.
Okay. Any questions, comments for Dennis?
Yeah, I have one. If, because the state has fixed the code, so to speak, if we vote this down and say, "No, we're going to do our own thing, we're going to keep it the way it is" and not require a license, where does that put us legally? Maybe that's a question for Brett, or I don't know.
The state, let me make sure I understand your question, so.
Well, if we just leave it the way that, we just say, "No, we're not going to update this. We're going to let kids operate on the road." Does that put us in jeopardy legally if something happened?
To be sued.
Maybe to defer to Chief Hurst and legal on that as far as their understandings of those laws.
No, I don't think it puts you in jeopardy. It isn't a requirement, it is allowed. So, I, no, I don't think you need to make that change to comply with state law.
The state, as far as the state changes with regards to licensing is concerned, they require that if you're going to be operating on public lands and trails, that you either have to have a license or a state certificate, that you've passed a safety course. So, that's as far as the state has gone into the regulation of licenses.
But I think you require that now, if I'm correct.
Yes.
And what happens if they have an accident and they don't have a certificate of safety? What's the penalty for that? If that's what we require now?
You mean the penalty for violation of the ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Simply be like a traffic ticket?
We had an issue, you know, just less than two months ago, where a couple of youth were driving down the street and happened to actually hit into one of our city vehicles that was parked on the side of the road. In that instance, they were very, they were, again, underage, the driver's underage. And so, we ended up issuing citations to the parents because of different laws that we have in place that way. So, there's some penalties in place that do get imposed upon the parents because of the lack of supervision or operation.
There are two sides to most issues, and this one isn't any exception. There are people who feel very strongly that children under age sixteen should be able to drive safely on public streets. The other side of it is, we have seen several instances in Santaquin City in the last year with pretty serious accidents just coming from that. Especially, you get, you know, two or more young people on one of these machines, and temptation is to drive a little bit differently than they would have, maybe they were a little more seasoned. And we had one where a child ended up being plung to front row of childrens, as I recall, with some very, very serious injuries. So, you know, you look, that's not often. It's, the risk is, the risk of it occurring is fairly low. But also, the risk of serious injury when it does can be pretty high.
Yeah.
I'd like to, I'd like to go on here and say that I appreciate the police department when they came and gave us the report that they gave and basically the options of where the state's going with this. There was, I felt at the time, there was two options for us. One was the least restrictive, what I felt was the requiring a driver's license. And of course, the most restrict was just saying, "No, ATVs on the road." I just want the public to understand that I feel that we're taking, I feel the less restrictive, even though some will feel that it's restrictive. But I feel we're taking the lowest number here to make it work, even though there's going to be a lot of people not happy with it. But it comes down to that we've got, the state supersedes city, obviously, in law, right? So, we've basically got to cover, we got to be within what the state code says. I think the public needs to understand that we're, it's not that we're jumping clear into the whole depth of it and restricting the whole thing. So, maybe you can explain to the public a little better on, because I think the issue is the driver's license thing. I think that's where the public's coming from, and that's their issue. Because they want kids to be able to ride.
And as I said before, the state does provide a safety training course, if you will, for youth that want to drive ATVs. And they provide that as a way of ideally educating and training. It's not necessarily like the motor vehicle where you have a required so many hours of drive time with a parent, without a parent, you know. But certainly, it provides some education. And I guess that's an option that the council could consider is if they have a driver's license or one of those safety certificates, then they could be riding their ATVs. But I think the greater concern is the enforcement side of that. How do you know who doesn't, who does? It's a little bit easier to recognize when it's a youth that's operating there. And that's really where we've had most of the problems, is the very young youth that are getting into accidents and causing injury issues.
So, I definitely don't think this is a disconnect of the council. I do not think this is, this is, it's our job to listen, it's our job to study out, and it's our job to do what we feel is best for the community. I'm concerned of Cory's comment that it would be the police just throwing up their arms. I don't think that was the case at all. I think you saw the officer's presentation. You know he put a lot of time and effort into it, and it wasn't easy for him. So, I definitely don't think the police officers are throwing up their arms either. But I do agree with the first comment. Have we done everything we can do? This is a fine line, like I agree with everything except for number two on there, right? My kids do not ride four-wheelers, mainly because I haven't bought them one, but they would like to. But I honestly think, and it's very hard for me because I'm over the police department, and I have been for a while, and I understand the concern of enforcement, and I definitely understand the concern of safety. We're damned if we do, or damned if we don't. We don't pass this tonight, then we're being too restrictive. And if we do pass this or don't pass this, whatever, vice versa, we don't care about safety, right? So, we're going to get bombarded either way. My question is, have we done every single thing we can to help the police officers enforce it a little bit better? Do we need to restrict and go to the driver's license? I don't know that we do. That's where I'm at. So, that's my thoughts.
I'd like to add to Nick's, if I can. I feel that, I'm with Nick on this. Have we covered all of it? The question is, is would there be an issue with if these kids happen to go get that? I know other states, the kids have to get that safety certificate. Now, whether you call that a license or not, but they have to, they have to go do that safety class and get that card. I mean, that's, I think that's maybe an option we could look at. I don't know, I don't know.
I think it would be.
And have to see what the legal issue is.
I think it might be good to hear from Chief Hurst or Chief Lynn, because one of the issues I think that has been addressed and shared in the past is, if you have a, let's say, a nine-year-old, which was the one that hit our city vehicle in a nice side-by-side and ruined their parents' side-by-side. On that situation, the officers don't know if that nine-year-old has a certificate or not until the accident occurs, or they pull that person over. They don't, there's no, there's nothing. As opposed to if they're sixteen and they have their driver's license, clearly, this person is not sixteen yet. It's a clear violation. It's much easier as far as the enforcement is concerned. So, I'm not, I just think that we have professionals that we probably ought to hear from. I don't.
I agree.
But my comment is, is this certificate teaching them how to obey traffic laws? How to stop at a stop sign, how to?
That's what the permitting process does. What this does is teach them how to operate it safely off-road or whatever. But off-road on a four-wheeler is different than on-road, and, you know, that's why I think we need to.
Chief, do you want to talk? Then I'll hear from Chief Lynn.
I'm not sure how much ground I want to rehash, but I think you folks have all the information available.
Can you pull it, there you go.
I think there's a misconception. When the state first started doing this OHV safety class, we used to sponsor one of these classes. From my understanding, it is now online, so they don't have to go prove any sort of skill set on operating an OHV. And no, it does not teach the rules of the road, stop signs, traffic signals, so forth and so on. It's more of an off-highway vehicle course. Did I answer your questions?
Yes.
So, I think, I think we've explored that the options are there, it's just a matter of what decision you'd like to make.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Hurst? Thank you. Chief Lynn, you're up. Tell us your thoughts.
I can see both sides of this. One of the things I was actually texting Chief Hurst about was the exemption for agriculture. Growing, well, I won't say growing up, but living here fifty percent of my life, a lot of the kids work the orchards, things like that, early morning, late nights, and commute on four-wheelers. So, I was happy to see that there was a exemption for those. From the law enforcement side, it's going to be hard to, if you go with the OHV certificate, how do I know how old that kid is with the helmet on? It's a little different. The vehicle that was rear-ended was mine by a nine-year-old. That nine-year-old was unrestrained. He's lucky he didn't go through the windshield, the back windshield of my vehicle. His passenger was also unrestrained and ended up with a fractured collarbone. So, had the parents been around, had they had something, that would have prevented not only our vehicle from getting damaged, but them from getting hurt. It's a delicate balance. I've seen kids, young, ride them that are educated and know their stuff, and I've seen kids flown to the hospital. And so, it's one of those delicate balances that the four of you, five of you, get to pick. And like Nick said, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. So, it's not an easy decision, and I feel for you.
We should table this.
Table it?
For January.
You know, somebody told me, it was probably Ben years ago, that there isn't a law ever created that it didn't happen because somebody messed up. And I understand the reason for, why do we have to pay for the errors of a few? But that's the way it is. It's the way all laws and codes were created. Somebody could have cared less about what was going on. You have to ask me if you want to speak. I've got a police officer right there that's ready to throw you out, so. Yeah. If you'd like to come up and state your name again at the microphone, because those on YouTube can't hear you.
Yeah, my biggest concern with it is, let parents decide. I don't think we need a law to tell me what's safe for my kid, per se. That's what it really boils down to, I think.
But what about those parents that aren't, you know?
I don't know if it's your place or my place to tell them if they're bad parents or how to parent.
Listen, as Mayor of Santaquin City, for the last almost eight years, I, my responsibility, number one, is safety. And there isn't a night I don't pray that something happens, accident-wise, okay? It's not worth one accident to me, okay? And if we can't take care of our kids?
No, I agree. I'm a parent of a two-year-old and a four-month-old. Safety's definitely first of all. I mean, I, listen, I broke my collarbone, I broke my wrist riding dirt bikes. Accidents happen. My parents allowed that to happen, and do I regret it? No, I don't regret riding motorcycles.
What about the parents that lost a child? What about them?
And that's, I think, a risk we take every day we choose to do anything, right? There's risks to everything we do. You drive to work, there's a risk you get in a car crash. I mean, literally, everything you do in a day has risk. There's always a balance between safety and, I guess, freedoms and choosing what you want to do. But I just have a hard time letting the law choose what's best in terms of what's best for, I guess, an individual or what they think's best for their family. I do understand, obviously, the reason we have laws is to protect, like, for example, someone from me. Why we have speed limits, right? So, I don't drive two hundred miles an hour and crash into somebody and hurt them. But I don't think laws should be able to protect me from myself, per se, or say, from my kids. So, I understand why we have laws, I respect laws, definitely. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Any other comment, yes?
I appreciate all the thoughts that have been shared from both the public and council and staff. One of the big differences that I see is that the safety certificate that teaches just basic operation for off-road use and not teaching the rules of the road is because a person without a driver's permit and a parent in the car, or a person without a legal driver's license, would not be allowed to operate a motor vehicle, like a car or a truck or a motorcycle, like a street-legal motorcycle, on the road without that license. So, when a, when a young person takes a four-wheeler or an OHV or whatever off-road, they are not sharing pavement with a multi-ton vehicle that can kill them. But when they drive on the street, they are. And as much as we try, we can't protect our kids from everything. We just can't. We do our best, and we can't. And Nick's absolutely right. We're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. We have to take all the information that we have available and then vote our conscience and make the best decision that we can at the time that the decision is presented. But that's, that's one of the big differences that I, that I see in the discussion.
Enter the comments.
How, if we pass this, when does it take effect?
Tomorrow at five P.M.
Immediately.
You can set the effective date, though.
Any comment, any more questions? You said your piece.
Said mine.
All right. I look for a motion. I look for a motion.
It's a hard one.
Yes.
If I might, again, share with the council what their options are. Certainly you can fail to make a motion on this and it dies. You could also, if you want to strip something out of this ordinance and make a motion on what remains, that's an option as well. Um, or as was mentioned by, by our city manager, you could set a different effective date. There's, there's lots of options that you have with this ordinance tonight in addition to just not acting on it.
Ben, can you slide back up to section two?
Section two?
I think, or number two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of this ordinance, yeah.
You know, I, um, I have a tremendous amount of respect for the residents of this city and for their opinions. And, um, and I also have a tremendous amount of respect for the police chief and the fire chief. And I think that, um, it's important, um, to remember that they see things every day that the rest of us don't see. And, um, the responsibilities of their, um, of their jobs, uh, require that they put safety first. And, um, one of the conversations that I have had with Chief Lynn, um, is that under certain circumstances, he would not send his people in to fight a fire because it would be too dangerous for them. That means a lot to me, that he respects human life that much. And I know Chief Hurst feels the same way. Damned if we do, damned if we don't. Mr. Mayor, I make an, I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending city regulations of off-highway vehicles, OHVs providing for codification, correction of scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date for the ordinance, Santaquin City Ordinance eleven dash zero one dash two thousand twenty-one.
We have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Meacham. Any further discussion on this resolution or ordinance? If not, Councilman Hathaway.
No.
Councilman Meacham.
Yes.
Councilmember of Montoya.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
No.
Okay. That leaves it up to me. I hope I'm going to do this for the mayor-elect so he can have sleep at night. But I vote aye. So that is approved three to two. We've got some friends here from U, U T A, and I have been making them wait. I'm thinking of move this up to, to their spot on the agenda and get it done. Uh, you're probably bored to death, but anyway, we have a resolution, uh, number twelve, resolution eleven dash zero two dash two thousand twenty-one, a resolution of support for the preferred alternative for the South Valley Transit Study. We have, uh, Mayor Jeff Acerson here from Linden City and my good friend Mary. Uh, good to see you again and, uh, and others. So we turn the time over to him for, tell us what it's about.
Well, I, I just appreciate the opportunity to be with you and I'm glad, I'm from Linden, so it's, it's a growing community, but it's still a little bit of country. That's our theme. So it's an honor to be here with you and just see the deliberation, the discussion, uh, the effort that you put forth on behalf of your citizens. And I think most of the time, people see it as a great decision and sometimes they see it as less than great. But, um, that's why you vote and that's why you elect people to represent you and, um, wonderful discussion. So, and as a mayor, I honor you because I love seeing good mayors doing a great job. So thank you. Um, but I'm here representing U T A this evening. So we feel a little privileged to have gone through this, uh, South County Transit Study. And we've got part of our team and, uh, Mary Delamar Schaefer and Claire Woodman. Did I get it right? Okay, I see her on Zoom, so I, I don't interact as much. And then Todd Provost is here with us. Great team, great effort. Uh, and I know you've participated, public input. And so tonight, we're here to kind of give you an overview in hopes that you will pass a resolution to accept the, uh, the study that is going for the preferred alternatives. So, okay. Who's next? Mary?
Okay. Mayor, members of the council and staff, it's delightful to be with you. I'm Mary Delamar Schaefer. I'm the regional general manager for U T A in Utah County and also a Utah County resident. Prior to coming to U, U T A, I was a city government employee for thirty-three years. So I actually find the meeting really wonderful to listen to. And, uh, you have a lot of, I have a lot of empathy for the kind of decisions that you have to make. They're never easy. So in some ways, our job is easier because we're a little further away from what hits the ground. But ultimately, what we do hits the ground. So I know for a number of years, twenty-plus years, you've heard talk about a train coming south, uh, of Provo. And this is the first time we've ever had something on the books in a plan. And that's super important because it doesn't count till it's, it's in writing. So, uh, you want to follow along with the slides? Um, I'm just going to talk a little bit and then I'll turn it over to Claire. She's our consultant. And by the way, y'all made her fall in love with Santaquin. Way to go. Um, she fell in love with, uh, Utah County through this study, particularly the South County. Um, this shows the study area, which was from Provo to Santaquin. I'm just going to own up to a mistake that I made and the mayor still likes me, so I'm, I'm grateful. A reporter asked me about this study and I said, it's going to be from Provo to Payson. And as soon as the words came out of my mouth, I believe I sent an email to Jason and said, oh, catch the mayor and tell him I meant Santaquin. Uh, so we own right-of-way from Provo to Payson, a rail right-of-way. But we don't own it from, uh, Payson to Santaquin. However, our constituency is from Santaquin North. And so what you're going to hear tonight is how we're going to work through that issue. And every time we come down or talk to any of the folks from Santaquin, uh, most notably these folks over here, um, they are eager to do whatever they can to keep it, keep Santaquin in the game. And, and the mayor said he did forgive me. I, I, I got it. I, I got it right. I won't forget. Um, so we went through what's called a locally preferred alternative. And that's a, a federal term. And it's very important that we follow federal process in the plans so we can qualify for funding. These projects are very expensive and long-term. And I think you all know what it means to have federal money in a project like this. So, um, the locally preferred alternative means that we have to have all the partners, all the cities from Provo to Santaquin have to agree on where are we going to put this transit? And what mode? Meaning, is it going to be a bus? Is it light rail? Is it a front-runner? So we have to look at all those and be serious about examining them and seeing what's the right course of action. And then it's super important to all of us that we have a very transparent and collaborative process. Um, I've been at U T A for five years, but I was a commuter on U T A from American Fork to downtown Salt Lake for about nine and a half years. And I have a lot of opinions before I got hired by U T A about how things should work. It's really fun when you have that and then you get hired and you get to have a say. And one of my biggest concerns was that the customers, the residents, the citizens, didn't have enough input on what we were doing. And yet we were doing it on your behalf, right? So we did a lot of work to get out and talk to the community and the staff helped us to get out and talk to the community. And of course, with talking to the mayor and hearing your, your needs and wishes through the mayor and your staff was really important to us because it's owned by the people. It's owned by all of us and we're the ones that should have the say about how that works. So if you want to click to the next slide, um, I don't really need to explain to you all because you are living this, but you know the importance of us being able to deal with our future population and employment. Um, you all are the heart of the growth of Utah County and you see it every day. Um, Jason, when he was showing the, the building permits going up, 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 and that's going to continue. So that's an important part of this study. That we have a very efficient regional system, that it works for the region. I knew when I was riding front-runner, back in the day, I had friends from Santaquin and South that were driving up to Provo to get the train so they could, could commute up north and jobs. So the whole job connection, um, is really important. We want to make sure what we do supports not only regional plans, but also local plans and policies about where you're headed as a community. And of course, there's the big economic development driver is where we put these big investments for transit. So I'm going to turn this over to Claire. Um, she's our consultant. Um, but when you hear her talk, you would think she works for U T A. Yes, she does work for U T A. She's on a number of our big projects and she's going to walk you through some of how we came up to collectively, all the cities came up to the decision about where, how we're going to move forward. And then Todd Provost, who is our director of capital projects, is going to talk to you about what happens next. That's squarely on his shoulders. Um, we don't do anything fast because it's such a major investment. So there'll be lots of time for people to give us input and put shape on it as we give details. And Todd will explain how that, that will roll. So I'm going to turn that over to Claire. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. And like Mary, I also started my career in local government. So it's actually really great to be at a council meeting. I've spent a lot of time, um, sitting at these and it's nice to be back, um, and see what's going on in this community. So thanks for having us. Um, next slide here. Um, I'm going to zip through these fairly quickly. Um, I don't abide by Robert's Rules of Order, so feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions or comments as we go. Um, probably easier to address them as we're on the right slide. So just raise your hand and we can stop and, and talk as we need. Um, as Mary said, this is looking like a large capital investment. And because of that, we want to make sure we're making good decisions. And so we go through a fairly rigorous process to screen down alternatives and get to a decision on a locally preferred alternative. Um, for those of, that were involved in the process, they've seen my funnel diagram a million times. But the point of this is we start big. We look at a full range of transit alternatives. We gather data, we narrow it down, we gather data, we narrow it down. Then we get to a locally preferred alternative. And as we continue to move through the process, we gather data at a greater detail so we can continue to make good decisions. Like Mary said, this was the first time we looked at transit really robustly in South Utah County. So it was really great to have data to help us make a good decision. And so we'll be sharing some of that tonight. Um, I'm going to talk really high level, just that our initial alternative screening step and then our detailed step. Um, like I said, we started off kind of very broad here. So we looked at three transit corridors. And so that's the lines on the map there. We looked at a transit alignment along I fifteen. We looked at a transit alignment along that rail corridor that Mary talked about. U T A owns right-of-way, like she mentioned, from Provo to Payson. And then we also looked at a more local, like, uh, a local service, as you can see, kind of on the east side, that connects some of those key arterials that string together, um, Provo, Springville, and the Spanish Fork, actually kind of hits Salem, uh, before going back into Payson and Santaquin. We also looked at a full range of modes. Um, Mary also said, hey, we've, we've been talking about a train for twenty years. Um, and that's really great that people have been talking about that. But we really want to vet the full range of alternatives, make sure we haven't missed something along the way. So we did look at commuter rail and you all know that as front-runner here in Utah. Uh, we looked at light rail, that's similar to tracks downtown. It's also a train, but it tends to make shorter stops or, uh, more stops along a distance. Um, bus rapid transit, that's similar to, say, U V X, which operates up in Provo and Orem. That's a bus that operates in its own exclusive right-of-way. And then we also looked at express bus. And that's just a typical bus service that would operate in traffic. Um, but the express bus service tends to have, uh, longer distances between stops. And so that would be a great way to serve South Utah County because you'd be able to, uh, cover a longer distance without making a lot of stops. Um, based on our initial alternative evaluation, um, we moved three alternatives into what we are calling our detailed evaluation. And this was really the heart of our screening. Um, and this is where we really did drop down into the details, looking at costs, looking at ridership, looking at impacts. Um, I know this is, uh, probably a little hard to see, especially for the public behind me. Um, but we had, like I said, three alternatives. The first was a commuter rail alignment from Provo to Santaquin. Um, it follows U T A's right-of-way from Provo to Payson. And then from Payson into Santaquin, um, it continues south along one rail alignment. And then in order to keep going and make an efficient connection out of Santaquin, it actually jumps out of one rail alignment and then connects into another so it can tie into Santaquin just north of Summit Ridge Parkway. Um, we also looked at a bus rapid transit alternative in that same alignment. So instead of having rail tracks, we would pull up the rail tracks, put in a road and serve it with a bus that would run exclusively in that corridor. Um, we are curious just to see how that would perform in terms of ridership and costs and some other factors. Um, so that was our second option. And then our third option, the one all the way on the right there, we're calling it the bus rapid transit design option. And we developed this as we, after we started looking at the bus rapid transit option as a way to start to reduce costs and impacts. Um, what we were seeing with the bus rapid transit option is that because of the operation of freight in some of the sections of the corridor, it actually became quite cost prohibitive to function, uh, to operate a bus, um, alongside of freight. So we wanted to look at an alternative to help us kind of get away from some of the costs of needing that freight separation. So in this option, from Provo to Springville, the bus is operating on I fifteen. And from Payson to Santaquin, it's also operating on I fifteen. Um, that section in the middle is in U T A's rail corridor, um, which, once again, they own. And so this one helped reduce costs and impacts, but also sort of reduced transit performance as well. So we looked at those three alternatives in a ton of detail. Um, I'm not planning on going into a ton of detail, but I'm prepared to as you have questions. Um, next slide. Um, and so as we were gathering a lot of data, looking at costs, looking at ridership, looking at return on investment, you know, cost per rider, um, what really started to emerge was this locally preferred alternative recommendation that we're talking about here. And that commuter rail is really quite an effective mode technology for generating a lot of riders. Um, because you can jump on front-runner, go through Provo, make up the Lehigh, you don't have to transfer. It's a very attractive transit service. And so it does perform very, very well in terms of ridership. And in that section, primarily from Provo to Payson, where U T A owns ridership, be, or owns right-of-way, get my R-word's confused tonight, um, it actually has a pretty great return on investment because that capital cost is a little bit lower because U T A owns the right-of-way. Um, and it also reduces some of the impacts. Once we go from Payson down to Santaquin, especially as we transition between the two rail lines that I mentioned, um, there could be a, um, substantial impacts on agricultural lands out there. Um, U T A does not own right-of-way, like I said. And so it becomes kind of a cost prohibitive segment to implement, at least as part of this locally preferred alternative. That doesn't mean that this segment does not warrant, um, consideration for commuter rail in the future. But there are probably additional steps that Santaquin should be taking in concert with Payson to start building up ridership on this segment, focusing on corridor preservation now, um, while land is available and cheaper. Um, and so our, um, recommendation that we are bringing to you tonight is looking at a locally preferred alternative that is establishing commuter rail from Provo to Payson and express bus service from Payson to Santaquin. Um, throughout this study, we had extensive public engagement. Um, I would say going into this study, we thought we were going to have to do a lot of transit education with the public throughout the South Utah County. We know that U T A doesn't provide robust service right now. Um, but what we found is people wanted to engage and they knew what they were talking about. Um, so we still provided some education, but we were, I, this, the study brings me a lot of joy. And one of the things that I love about it is how much robust public input we got and just support for the project, excitement, and people understood what we were talking about. And so I have some stats up there. We got over a thousand comments, which is phenomenal for a study like this. And they were, almost all of. is phenomenal for a study like this. And they were, almost all of them were really useful. They weren't like, hey, fix the light outside my house. The traffic signal pattern's funny, you know, like, we get a lot of random comments, but these were kind of on topic and engaged. So we're really excited. We got great feedback from Provo to Santaquin. I'll show you on my next slide here in a second that we really did get great feedback up and down the corridor. UTA actually was a great partner. They went out to all these different community events up and down the corridor, including Orchard Days in Santaquin. And so it was really great to get out to your communities, and we got a lot of great feedback. Like I said, we heard a lot of great things. That map on the right just shows where folks were leaving comments on our map. So at the far southern end is Santaquin, and you can see that we got quite a few comments from Santaquin, which is really great. We got really strong support for frontrunner and support of this commuter rail option up and down the line. I say that because it's not surprising, but a lot of transit projects oftentimes garner a lot of opposition. We saw a little bit of that, but this was a really strongly supported project. People that are living in South Utah County, they're driving to Provo, they're leaving their car and hopping on frontrunner. They want to do it sooner. And we don't blame them. So a lot of support for the project, a lot of support for using a transit station as an opportunity for high-quality development. And then specific to Santaquin and also some of the other communities that we talked to, like Salem and Mapleton, really a lot of strong support for local bus service throughout the county. So recognizing that commuter rail can't serve every location, want to make sure that we're connecting parts of the communities that need to get to commuter rail to the commuter rail station. So once again, a lot of really great feedback. And so I want to thank you all for helping spread the word and passing along the words to your constituents. So just some next steps. Part of our, our plan of work was to identify next steps for all the cities up and down the corridor. And so for Payson to Santaquin, you all have kind of a different set of next steps. But kind of the key thing, and MAG isn't here tonight, but MAG has been one of our key partners as well. And it's really important that this segment gets included in the next round of the RTP as either an unfunded segment or a segment that needs corridor preservation.
Do you want to define those acronyms?
Oh, sorry. This happens a lot, you know, it's getting late at night. So MAG is the Mountain Land Association of Governments, your local metropolitan planning organization. And RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan, that kind of dictates the transportation needs through 2050, highways, roads, active transportation. It's kind of the blueprint for future transportation facilities throughout the county. And so really identifying this Payson to Santaquin segment as kind of a critical corridor preservation need is really important. And so I would encourage you all to continue the conversation with UTA and MAG to make sure that gets added to the next RTP. And then also working with UTA to do additional design to start identifying that corridor preservation need that's out there. We did a fairly low-level, low amount of engineering, and additional engineering is needed to really make sure we're identifying the right properties that need to be preserved. And because a lot of them could be in agricultural lands, there's probably a lot of coordination that needs to start happening early. And then for the last bullet, continuing to work with Mary and just her team on service planning and making sure that we're building ridership in Santaquin that can help serve this future commuter rail alignment. And so just our immediate next steps, we are going out to all the cities along the corridor, asking for approval of the resolution to adopt the locally preferred alternative. This is kind of a critical piece for UTA to ensure that as they move the project forward, that all the communities are in support of this type of investment. We'll send along our final documentation later this month. Like I said, moving forward with Mary and her group and talking about express bus options in Santaquin. And then also just ongoing advocacy for projects up and down the corridor that can help bring commuter rail to Santaquin earlier. Mary speaks to this better than I do, but I know the frontrunner program in and of itself came online a lot sooner than anticipated. And so the actions you guys can take now and start to get the ball rolling for communities to the north to get that investment in kind of helps create success down the line for you all. So this has been a really exciting process, and it's been hard to wrap it up because I just wanted to keep going. But so we look forward to continuing the conversation. Does anyone have, actually, no. I'm going to turn over to Todd, who's going to wrap it up.
Mayor, council members, staff, thank you. As Mary mentioned, my name is Todd Provost. I am the Director of Capital Development with UTA. You know, you've been very fortunate to work with Mary and Claire, and now unfortunately, I'll be entering the picture a little bit. But no, I'll be working closely with Mary and the team. So Mary's not going anywhere. Mayor Aserson is not going anywhere either. If you could hit the next slide, and I, and I will wrap up. The steps that have been happening over the last little while, that's a huge foundational piece for this project. Mayor Aserson reminded me, you know, knowing that right-of-way, knowing that corridor, where that's going allows you, from a zoning perspective, to understand and make maybe better decisions or different decisions as we go down the road. But we do have a lot of work to do. So this slide is to identify that, to show you, yes, we've gotten through a huge step. You see the star at the bottom, getting through the planning and alternative analysis step. But we do have a lot of work from a project development perspective before you see dirt being thrown out in the right-of-way. There's a lot of environmental, environmental review in there. We'll do, you know, our environmental studies, our preliminary engineering to help us refine that cost and drive our budgets. Final design, that is very important for us. We want to make sure that you are all involved, that your constituents see what's going to be actually built out into the system. And then we're always excited about, you know, obviously groundbreaking and testing. But all of these are built off of the work that's been done by the team for the last two years. So kudos to you and the staff, Mary and team. Great work so far. We've got a lot of work to do. So we're very excited about this. I wish I could tell you when we would be throwing dirt. We've got a lot of work to build a schedule to identify those things. We've got to obviously find funding, working with you and potentially the federal government and the Federal Transit Administration. But thank you for the time. And again, kudos on the great work today.
There is money out there. And I got a call from Val Peterson. I don't know if you know who he is, but he represents a good portion of South Utah County. And he made, he said, how much money do you need for frontrunner down to Payson and eventually down to Santaquin? So there is that conversation going on. There is a lot of interest. Stay engaged, be a part of it. I mean, you think Santaquin's the end of the line? I have people from Nephi talking. So, you know, and it's, it's going to grow. And it's a part of your vision and your support and your planning that's going to help this happen sooner than later. So as far as UTA is concerned, we're here to support you and help you facilitate what you want to see your city be engaged as far as transit. So we appreciate the time and thank you. And, you know, I know this is kind of the end of the road for you, but I know you've got a new mayor coming, coming down the pipe. Is that correct?
I guess.
Yeah, so it's good. But thank you. We appreciate that. If there are any questions.
Yeah, any questions?
If I could make a comment, I basically sat in most of these meetings. And I think something that was really enlightening to me, and maybe Mary can, can touch on this a little more, was I learned a little bit more about a situation that I think probably many in Santaquin might, might compare ourselves to. And that was, a lot of people understand that there was a frontrunner station that was closed at the very north end of the line in Pleasant View. That was not shut down due to the lack of ridership. That was shut down because there were some safety regulations that couldn't be met. And in order to bring it up to safety standards, it would have been a significant amount of money. I think that was enlightening to me because that is an existing station that was there, was being used. But even despite that being there, it was too much money in order to keep it going. I think that's probably comparable to Santaquin in the fact that I think growth will only continue to justify having ridership down here. But the costs are so significant right now with, with the lack of right-of-way on the Tintec line and the Union Pacific line to get it here. So I think that was a misconception that maybe people think that the Pleasant View Station was shut down because of lack of ridership. Through this process, I learned that it wasn't. And I think it brings into perspective of just how expensive these projects are and how much UTA has to deal with in terms of funding for these types of things. So I don't know if you wanted to expand on that anymore. Did I get that right?
We definitely want to partner with you. That's, we want to make sure you know that.
I would say it's really important to grow into transit. And as Santaquin is growing, we can grow into transit by first getting the right express bus service so that it works and we get the train. The numbers that we're looking at for ridership are out in 2050. However, how the cities grow and how fast it grows will influence the process. Claire was talking about, we were not scheduled to have funding for frontrunner until 2030. And the reason that we built the frontrunner when we did is because Hawaii wasn't ready to spend their money, and we were. So we're getting ready to spend money. So when money shows its face, we got a plan. And that's what's so important about this process. There's nothing like having this in writing. Just in closing, I want to say, Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome.
You've been delightful to work with, and I appreciate all the support. And I will personally miss you. And he did good for you all. I just want you to know, and the staff. So it's, we'll be back. We'll see you again soon. I do want you to know, the very first meeting I met with the mayor when I started at UTA, he sat me down and told me that you need a parking ride. I have not forgotten. So
I knew you wouldn't.
We know there are needs down here.
He will haunt you until it's done.
He will. Actually, he will. But we know there are needs down here. We did do some improvements on bus stops, but we would love to see more options for people to be able to commute. There's a lot of commuting that happens out of Santaquin. So thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Does Santa Claus still ride the UTA?
My Santa Claus retired.
I just saw the picture of you and Santa Claus that I've had for years.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I didn't know that Santa Claus. I just met him that day on the train. And I was like, are you the real Santa Claus? He said, yes.
She sent me a picture of her and Santa Claus on the train and said, look who rides UTA.
That was a good day at UTA. Yeah.
Thank you for all your, all you're doing.
We appreciate you. And what we're asking for tonight is if you can approve the resolution that says, yes, this is a locally preferred alternative. We're on board. So the federal government knows that we're all agreeing. Yes, sir.
Well, I have a question that probably, you've obviously seen our growth, the growth rate we have here.
Oh, yeah.
My question would be is, how soon, because land acquisitions are happening now, how soon can we get a guidance from you guys that specifically gives us a corridor to look at?
So Todd's going to be the guy that helps us figure that out in this next step. And what's really nice is MAG, Mountain Land Association of Governments, has a preservation corridor fund. And we can, you know, working with you all, we could go ahead and acquire property. And then when we go and build the project, we can pay back that. So the sooner the better. And I think Ben's been on our case, I'll say that in a nice way. Ben has encouraged us to let him know where they need to buy property.
Okay.
So that, you know, that's a big deal. You see how we got where we are from Provo to Payson because we bought that property. So we see the need, and we know it's tricky. But there's money that we can borrow until we're ready for the project.
I just want to make one, one statement to you, that the, the community Santaquin, Santaquin is very much behind UTA. Utah County now has the quarter percent sales tax for UTA. But before that was imposed by the county, it went to a vote of our community, and our residents did vote and approve that. So
Hey, thank you, Santaquin.
I think that's a statement of support from our residents themselves, through their own throats, their own
How many years ago was that, Ben?
Long time ago.
It was before my time at the city.
That's got to be a long time ago.
Probably 2010, 11 timeframe, that, that took place because they wanted to bring bus service here. And we did have it on the horizon for, for future frontrunner. And so the rest of the county didn't have that vote. It was the commissioners, I believe, that did. But as far as our community, our residents have already voted and stood behind you. So we just wanted to
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And I'm just really happy that we could have our trustee with us. There's three trustees that govern UTA. And trustee/Mayor Aserson is a great advocate for all of us in Utah County and helping move these things forward. So, thank you all.
He's a good man. Thank you. Thank you.
He's good. He does good.
He'll get it done. I know that. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, any comments on this resolution? If not, I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 11-2-2021, a resolution of the City of Santaquin declaring support for the locally preferred alternative for the South Valley Transit Project.
We have a motion by Councilman Meacham. I think you need a raise.
I'll take one.
You've been doing a lot of motions tonight. So is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Hathaway. Any further discussion on this resolution? If not, Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Member Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Thank you. That was unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll keep, we'll keep pushing.
All right. Thank you.
Keep us accountable, okay?
All right. Thank you. All right, back to new business, item number 11. We have Ordinance 11-02-2021, a temporary ordinance requesting review of the interchange commercial C1 zone.
Mayor, I'm not sure if you want to introduce this, or if you want me to introduce this, but I'm happy to do so.
Go ahead and introduce this.
Okay.
Then I'll support you.
In, in the community of Santaquin, one of our, our core values is protecting our agricultural industry. And it is, as our identity, it is who we are as a community. And it's something that we want to protect and preserve. But our agricultural community is very closely co-located against commercial ground. And sometimes potentially impactful uses on that commercial ground can have a negative impact on the agricultural community in general. One idea that has been floated of late raised some concerns for us with regard to the potential impact on, on the agricultural community. And we felt that it was warranted. I guess the mayor felt that it was warranted.
I think it'd be impactful on all of our community, to tell you the truth. Not just the, the farming community.
Right. But especially in its general location to, to agricultural grounds and orchard grounds. The mayor directed us to, to look at that potential impact and what it would do to our community, and stop and take time to look at that more carefully by putting in what's called a temporary ordinance. Or another word that's often associated with this is a moratorium on the construction of truck stops within our C1 zone so that the Planning Commission and the City Council have the time and the opportunity to look at truck stops in general, which are not defined in our code. But because they're not defined in our code, there's kind of that void, that gap, if you will. And, and if you don't prohibit it, then it's something that's by default permitted in many cases. And so because it's not addressed in our code, it hasn't been reviewed by the Planning Commission or our elected leaders, it felt that it was warranted to put a temporary ordinance in effect. It is for up to a six-month period. It could be renewed for one more six-month period. But that, the intent of state code on a temporary ordinance is to give time to do the evaluation and the planning necessary so that something doesn't come in arbitrarily through an application process that could have a negative impact. So it's before you for your consideration. It's not prohibiting it. It's just temporarily imposing a restriction.
Any comments, thoughts?
We need it.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance 11-02-2021, a temporary ordinance requesting review of the interchange commercial C1 zone.
We have a motion by Councilman Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Montoya. Any further discussion on this ordinance? If not, Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
And Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Wow, that was unanimous. There's three, three Ms right in a row there. I hadn't realized that before. All right.
Only been two years.
No, I know. But I never said them in a row like that much. So, all right, our resolutions, item number 13, Resolution 11-04-2021, a resolution approving the Summit Ridge Commercial Development Agreement.
Mayor, Council, this is something long in the works. And we've been, as, as you all recall, many months ago, Kate Tishner came into our, our council meeting and announced the sale of his Tishner Ford dealership to Murdoch Ford. And that came kind of a little bit of as a shockwave to our community, but we've embraced and welcomed Murdoch Ford into our community. And that's been just a wonderful addition and what they've done. And, and of course, part of that was a desire by Ford to have Tishner at the time, and now Murdoch, expand. And we're very fortunate And we're very fortunate to see them expand within our community. That is something that's on the horizon, but in order to affect a potential for that to, to take place, we really have needed to work in a very complex manner with, with regard to our south interchange. Our south interchange is PC zone, Planned Community Zone, and it no longer has a development agreement out there. And without a development agreement, the default land use regulations for that zone go to the C1 commercial zone. And so, we have the original, the developer, HDT Utah One, who has sold to the Summit Ridge 242 group. And, and that first sale of property is 16 acres. And that is, has gone through a subdivision process. And many in our community have seen that as it has eight different phases or eight different sections. And, and so, we've, we've been through an evolutionary process to be able to have a development agreement put, put in place that would facilitate the sale of property potentially to the Murdoch group so that they would be able to come in and, and expand their Ford dealership. But currently, the Ford Murdoch group does not own the land and so has been a little bit reserved in being able to come to the table. And we respect that until such time that the land is sold. But the land couldn't be sold until the development agreement was in place. And the development agreement contemplates whatever needs that they might have. And so, we have this catch 22 situation. And so, we truly appreciate Mr. Lillenquist and, and, and the entire team that has, has put together a, a framework development agreement that anticipates future addendums so that the, the project can be developed, the sales tax proceeds can help to pay for some of the infrastructure that's out there, and that we can see Murdoch Ford expand within our community, retain that, that business that's so near and dear to many of our hearts as well as to see it expand and pull value-added dollars into our community. We don't only want to buy local, we want to invite others to buy within our community. And there's no better way to do that than to see a, an expansion. There, this, this has gone, gone through the rounds to, to meet the needs of everybody. It's before you for your consideration. It's Resolution 1104. I'm happy to answer any questions or if you want to turn any time over to our legal council, to those who are involved in the development agreement, Mr. Lillenquist.
I was just grateful it was only 32 pages long.
Our template, you have to understand, our template agreement is 30 pages long. So, that's quite an accomplishment only to add two pages.
I'm glad.
It's only incremental. You have to look at it.
Any questions or concerns or comments about this?
I thought it was great leisurely reading.
Maybe it is clearly, clearly, Norm just said, for the sake of the public, I know the council members have had the opportunity to, to go through this, but to clearly outline what the reimbursement framework is so that the residents understand that. Maybe that's really important to share. So, long story short, what we have, what we have in this framework through this development agreement here is that we use Tishner Ford as a basis. If the property, and we say if because it hasn't closed yet, but it's where we have confidence, if the property sells to Murdoch Ford, then what we use is this, the sales of Tishner Ford over the calendar year 2020 as a basis. That 100% of the sales tax enjoyed by Santaquin City historically by Tishner Ford would continue to be enjoyed by Santaquin City in perpetuity at 100% level. Beyond the 100% level, 50% of the sales taxes would come to the city and 50% of the sales taxes would be used to reimburse the development. And it's important to note that it's not only to reimburse the infrastructure costs, but it does contemplate the framework that now this property can be sold, that the Murdochs themselves can come in and, and can have a seat at the table to talk about what reimbursements they might need for any, whatever infrastructure that they have internally. It already contemplates the infrastructure improvements that would facilitate the subdivision and the construction and phasing of, of the overall project to exit 242. 50% of those sales tax increment, or sales tax dollars that are above the Tishner basis would be used to reimburse until such time that the actual costs are reimbursed, the contract is, is discontinued or the, the overall contract term length expires. And so, it's our hope and our goal, and I think it's probably your hope and your goal, that that duration is as short as possible because that means sales are fantastic out there and the infrastructure is paid off just as soon as it can, can be. But we don't, we anticipate that there will be an addendum to this agreement. Right now, the agreement as it stands continues to point to the C1 zone for all regulations. There's no exception to those. However, we know that there are likely going to be requested regulation exceptions. Perhaps Ford would require a, a, a larger sign or a different shaped building that's, that's conforming to their franchise. We don't know until we have that conversation. So, as it stands right now, it, it doesn't have any exceptions and it does create the framework for reimbursement. The addendum would outline two things. One, what their exception to code would be, and two, what their reimbursement proportionality. And when we reimburse, the proportionality is, is important. 50% goes to the reimbursement at the same proportionality to the, the master developer as the sub-developer so that there's not priority one over the other. They're, they're both reimbursed equally and proportionally until they're, it's fully satisfied. It does contemplate that there are future parcels or more than just the original sale to Murdoch. And, and so, it does contemplate the framework of reimbursement for infrastructure improvements that hits the greater 16 acres. And this development agreement could be used as a template for future expansions of the 16 acres as more land is acquired at the south exit. Did I miss anything, Norm? Okay. And the length of the contract is 15 years. That's what we landed on, right?
It's 10 and 10. Is that correct?
Or 10 and with a renewal of 10?
Yeah.
We did go back and forth. So, it's 10 with a renewal of 10.
With a renewal of 10.
Any questions? Comments? I'm just glad they found me.
I.
Yes, go ahead.
I like the way that this is structured. I think that it is going to be of great benefit to the city and hopefully to the businesses that come as well and our residents.
Okay. I do as well. So, I'd look for a motion on this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 11-04-2021, resolution approving the Summit Ridge Commercial Development Phase One Master Development Agreement.
We have a motion by Councilman Hathaway. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion on this resolution? If not, Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
And Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
Thank you. That was unanimous. Okay. Item 14, discuss, discussion, possible action, Foothill Village Boulevard right-of-way vacation. Nine homes. Are you part of that vacation?
Part of that vacation.
All right, go ahead.
Tropical.
There's no resolution. This is just a, a discussion of possible action. You heard the public hearing earlier and the explanation by our city manager with regard to those homes. If, if the council is supportive of this, we would look for a motion to approve the vacating of nine parcels to the adjacent homeowners of property that's no longer needed by Santaquin City.
And would have no purpose in our owning it.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any questions, comments? I think it's pretty well talked about. I'd look for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve as stated by Ben.
Staff? Okay. Do we vacate the Foothill Village Boulevard right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay. The nine homes. All right. We have a motion by Councilman Meacham. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Montoya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I request a five-minute recess.
Yes, let's do. Thank you. Is that okay, council? All right.
Item and excuse me, the selection of a replacement council member as the only actionable item on that meeting, but we do intend to have a consent agenda if that's okay. Where we approve the minutes, we also have a few consent items that we've been working on that are not impactful. And one of those is the other thing I wanted to report on, and that is the police department has contacted me to talk about out-of-state travel requests. That is something that we bring to the council. It's not on the agenda for this evening, but we have the opportunity to get a new canine unit, a new dog, and Officer Lerwell will be the one who will be working with this canine unit. And Corporal Wall is going to be the supervising officer over that with his experience and training. And it was thought that it would be best if Corporal Wall were able to accompany Officer Lerwell to help pick out the dog, to make sure they pick out a good one, and then Officer Wall would come back and Officer Lerwell would stay for the full week. The police department has funding in their budget to support this. If it's something that you're kind of would give the nod to, then we would put it as a ratification on the consent agenda for next time. Any questions for Chief Hurster or myself?
Where's that, Vegas? Oh, Little Rock. Is that Nevada?
Little Rock, Arkansas.
You need a council member to go with you.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. In the past, we used to say council.
Yeah, we used to say council members.
I would just feel more comfortable if Corporal Wall went with him for a couple of days to... It's a significant cost and investment that we're making, and I just would like him to have some guidance on picking the right animal. And I would like to get flights booked. That's why.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
With that nod, they can go ahead and start with the flights, and we'll put that on the consent for the 23rd. Aaron, you had something else for the consent on the 23rd?
Financial policies.
Oh, we've been talking about financial policies for the city of Santaquin for some time, in the vein of all this cleanup that we've been seeing, and Dennis has been working on, and Aaron's been working on, and what we're intending to do is take our financial policies that are in code, our financial policies that are in the employee handbook, the financial policies that are in the budget book, consolidate those, unify those into a... Not change them in any significant way. I think it does change the spending limits, and we'll outline that in memo form if there's any concerns. But this is really just compiling it and consolidating it into one so that we don't miss something if we change something over here, it doesn't affect something else, putting them all in one location. So those two, and everything else that comes up on consent, we'll make sure that they're not impactful, and if it's something that's supported, we'll put it on there. Lots going on in the... A major accomplishment with the development agreement, we appreciate your support on that. We think that's the framework to support Murdoch Ford moving forward. It's the cog in the wheel that's now taken care of. And we've been working on other development agreements in other areas, really trying to get things buttoned up before year end. Of course, our council is not going to be meeting on December the...
Thursday?
First Tuesday. Seventh, December the seventh, and in lieu of that, we will be having a special meeting on December the 14th. And we're not intending at this time to meet on the 28th, though we kind of reserve that as a potential meeting. We know that there's a conflict already, but we're gonna do anything and everything we can not to impact your Christmas holiday, have the one meeting in December on the 14th.
Will there be a work session with that one?
I don't think so, and that's because it's also gonna have a planning commission that night, and we're likely... Depending upon which agenda is heavier, we will likely... We think the planning commission's gonna be lighter, and we would start them earlier in the evening, and so that they can complete their meeting and finish it, and the council can, if they... If it goes long, it will be later in the evening on the 14th.
So stay tuned.
Stay tuned, but we don't envision a work meeting for the council, just going straight into regular meeting.
Okay.
Any questions for me at all?
Thank you. You're welcome. Assistant City Manager, Norm.
So I'd point the council to our website and all the upcoming activity on the 10th and 11th of December. We are likely going to have a lighting ceremony at the plaza. No, we're not. Okay, never mind. We'll go ahead and turn those lights on when they're ready. Also wanted to let you know that there's some... There's quite a bit of work going on on the east bench right now. If you're wondering about that, there's really four different efforts that are happening over there. We have some of the geotechnical work that's happening for our east side debris basins. Right now, that's up in the wall orchard up against the bench, and then they will be moving east of Maverick here next week or the week after. There's also the mass grading that's happening at the old assumption pit, the Gray Cliffs. That's an approved mass grading permit that's moving forward. There's a lot of work going on there. And I also understand there was also some lighter geotechnical and drainage work that was being studied on the Santaquin Estates property just to the south and east, otherwise known as the Pedersen property. So a lot of stuff going on there. Again, there's really four different efforts or four different locations where things are happening. If you have questions on that, I'm happy to answer those for you. Again, just trying to button everything up for the winter. We have a couple of roads that are still being worked on, and hopefully will be paved this week and get that done on 200 North specifically, and a couple of other smaller areas in town to get that buttoned up before the winter hits. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
I do. Will they get the sidewalks done on Center Street and Highland Drive at that intersection?
So, yes. So they're gonna be doing the sidewalks on both sides of Canyon Road and the ped ramps, the pedestrian ramps, so there will be a clear walking path all the way from the east side of Canyon Road all the way around to the school here in the next few weeks. They can do that if the weather turns cold. Asphalt, they can. The trail going southbound into adjacent to the Jamie Evans property that we purchased as part of the Furnace Road and going into the next phase will not happen until springtime.
Yeah, that's fine. And then also, the development... I don't know what it is, the development where they tore down the billboard.
Oh, the Orchard Hills Townhomes?
Are they gonna patch that sidewalk in too? They've got two sections of sidewalks removed, so that'll get done this winter as well?
Yes. Sidewalk's not as time-restricted.
Yeah, and that's fine. I'm not worried about the time. I just want to make sure it's done before, like, snow's flying and whatnot, kids are walking and can't see and whatnot.
Yeah, there's two segments, I think, of sidewalk where they had to bring utilities in. The curb and gutter and sidewalk are missing, and yes, they will have that done. I don't know the timeframe on that, but that is something that they can move forward and get it done, and we'll indicate that we would like to have that done sooner rather than later.
Okay. Thanks, Norm. Community Development Director, Jason Bond.
So I'm gonna build off of both Norm's and Ben's comments. As you know, there's a lot of work being done and a lot of developments that are... Have a desire to move forward and get things wrapped up before the holidays. As such, Norm talked about Gray Cliffs and Santaquin Estates. Development agreements are being worked on, both of those, and plans are being looked at, and there's a lot of work happening there. Because we have Thanksgiving holiday and the Christmas holiday, which takes up some of the meetings, this November, we happen to have a fifth Tuesday, which I know was even an option for an additional council meeting if needed. I don't think, right now, there's any anticipation to have a council meeting then, but the planning commission is likely going to have a special meeting on that night because there was no regular meeting, which happened to be on the week of Thanksgiving. So we're trying to do our best to, you know, help accommodate some of these projects kind of being worked out and continue to be worked on despite the holidays. So know that that's there. This Thursday is another general plan public open house. This is an announcement for the public and everybody who's involved. It'll be at CS Los Academy at seven o'clock. Really, it's gonna be showing the... And being able to read the vision that was put together based on the survey results, based on efforts of the Imagine Santaquin Committee that's been meeting on a regular basis. This vision will really be the foundation to start really diving into general plan goals and policies and a little bit more of the planning side. It's been a lot more of visioning and trying to articulate what we want the future of Santaquin City to look like. So I want to make sure that you know about that and that the public knows about that, and we really hope that people will take the time to come and be a part of that process. I think that's it for me.
Okay. Question for you. I noticed Santaquin Orthodontics and Canyon Creek Dentistry haven't got a business license yet. How close are they?
I don't know. That's probably a question for them. We work with them on the sign permitting process. Obviously, the building is getting close to being done. Sometimes these types of timelines of when businesses will open is really up to them. We're here standing ready to help facilitate them getting proper licensing and permits so that they can do so, but I've not had any coordination with them or understand any timeline that they have to open up.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Miller, any to report?
No, everything has been touched on. Betsy can have the rest of my time.
Councilmember Montoya, any to report?
No.
Really? Really? Councilman Meekum.
Nothing for me.
Councilman Hathaway.
I do. I have something, and I'll see if I can get Norm to pull it up. Me and Norm went to our Mountain Ebo meeting yesterday, and there's been some, I would call some very good things happening there. Some reports came in that they've been working on. One of the reports is groundwater, where our groundwater is. And if we can get men to pull up our wells here in Santaquin...
Go down probably about 10 or 15 pages. Keep going. Go up to... So what Dave's alluding, if you're... So what Dave's alluding to is that we have some of the best data that has been provided to the Mountain Ebo Agency that's been doing this groundwater study. What you're looking at here is well levels, our well levels for our wells in Santaquin City. There's actually five of them, but what we're seeing is something that's happening all the way through the south end of the valley. There's, in the same report, there's wells from Spanish Fork, there's wells from Payson, from Springville especially, that were compared to ours. What you're really seeing there is that yellow jagged line is a very long trend for many, many years. The blue data is the stuff that we have provided in the last few years, and that helps them to calibrate the models and helping them to understand what's happening. But as a general trend, our static water levels are continuing to decline in all of our wells, and that's a general... That is a general happening all the way through South Utah County. Springville, if you look at Springville's, theirs are considerably more steep of a decline than ours are. But what's happening as part of the Mountain Ebo Agency is that we're moving and gathering this data to come up with a groundwater management plan that will be eventually presented to the state of Utah that will kind of be a... I don't want to say a... I would say maybe an overlay of the water rights in the area, basically saying, here's the water that we have in the area, here's the physical water that we can rely on, on wet years and dry years, and et cetera, et cetera, helping us to better manage that aquifer, again, not just Santaquin, everything from Santaquin to Salem to Payson to Elk Ridge to private irrigation companies, Strawberry Highland Canal, they have wells in our area. All of those entities are part of the Mountain Ebo Agency, and that's the direction that we're going right now, is to come up with a groundwater management plan that helps us to better understand, first of all, what's there, and help us to avoid much more of this decline in our wells. Everything from artificial recharge, which is, you know, what's called aquifer storage and recovery, where we import water maybe out of CUP or something of that nature in the future, not the incoming stuff that we have coming shortly, but more of it in the future. We could artificially recharge the aquifer that will help continue to bring these wells up and that kind of thing to keep us healthy, basically. That's where we're at. The north end of Utah County 20 years ago did a similar effort, because they were finding that their groundwaters were also declining rapidly. They actually have a... The state actually has a mandated groundwater master plan, or groundwater plan in place for North Utah County that helps to, again, preserve this. We're way ahead of the curve. We're way ahead of where we could be if we weren't doing anything, and this is a very good effort by Mountain Ebo to help us study and understand this better and help plan for us in the future so that we don't continue to mine the aquifer, is what it's called mining, where we just continue to go down and down. One thing to point out here, though, is that this is very consistent with our springs. Our springs over the last 30 years have a general trend downward just like this, and it happens to correspond literally nearly perfectly with precipitation. So the springs are gravity-fed, so there's not... We're not over allocating or over mining those like we can with wells. It is what it is in a spring situation where the aquifer has the water that the aquifer has, and the springs will provide what they will provide. As far as natural recharge, it just has been going down. In fact, the last 11 years have been really dry, and that's kind of taking us on a downward trend. It's not alarming at this point in time, but it is something that we're trying to address and making sure that we understand it better so that we can plan properly for the future.
Is the agricultural community on board with those two?
So Mountain Ebo has, is a consortium of cities, Strawberry Highland Canal, so that's the agricultural community you're talking about. Again, they have multiple wells all over in the south end of the county, and so, yes, they're on board and helping with this study, both financially and with well readings and other things. Not only are we supporting that, the agricultural community is as well. And again, it's something that we need to get more people on board with, with folks that have private wells and other water rights to just make sure that we're not mining the aquifer.
Yeah. It's just kind of concerning to me to hear Provo City talking about spending millions of dollars in the recharge recovery effort, and yet, the majority of our water is used by our agricultural community, and the money that we could spend, you know, it just, to me, it doesn't seem fair. I know we're using it for a different purpose, but... And yet, so I hope they get on board and start doing things that can help conserve water.
Yeah, not all of them are on board, but not all the cities are on board either. Again, Mountain Ebo is a consortium, and we... There's several cities in the south end of the county that have chosen not to be on board with that, and that's fine, too. So it's really trying to find that balance, but we've got enough of the significant water right holders in the area that will help us to build this groundwater management plan and get it adopted by the state or accepted and approved by the state to, again, help us to be healthy in our aquifer.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd just like to make another comment about the Mountain Ebo group. I feel that that group has been doing some really good work. I mean, not only do you have the CUP people there, you have the Utah Lake people there. They have reports on upcoming things that they're gonna try to do with the lake. I mean, they're... I think this group is doing an awesome job of finding out where the issues with the water's gonna be and stuff, so...
And planning for the future. They even have a plan formulation right now where they're talking about drinking water and where the needs are for drinking water and building a plant similar to what they have up at the mouth of Provo Canyon in Orem to service drinking water needs everywhere from us to any needs that we may have, to Salem, to Payson, and even potentially Juab County. And so, again, they're looking at a very big, very long-term picture of how we take care of the water in our area and how we bring more in, so...
And just one thing, Norm, maybe you can touch on that. What they're looking at right now is they're putting together a water bank system. I don't know if that'll ever affect us per se, but I know Spanish Fork and them, they've hired a firm to match this. I guess the state come out with some guidelines on this water banking, and they're trying to work their way through it because it's a new process. And I think she gave us a pretty good report on where this water banking is gonna go.
Yeah, the state actually has a water banking statute now that they have put this framework together, and there's three pilot projects right now that are going on throughout the state. One down by Price, one in the Snyderville Basin area, and the other one is up in Hiram, Logan, and Cache Valley. And so, again, just trying to help us better understand long-term planning for water, and as you can tell from the governor's comments this year, water is on his mind and it's on many others' minds as well. And so, just everything that's being done at the Mountain Ebo Agency has been really good for us. So we have SuVMA, which is an older agency and has its purpose, but Mountain Ebo is really helping us to take a huge step forward in water planning and master planning for, again, the aquifer as well as long-term needs for the entire area. Again, you've got Central Utah on board, mayor, you've got Strawberry Highland Canal, you've got many of the cities, so you've got a lot of the big players that hold a lot of water rights, and also Goshen Valley Local District, which is the Church of Jesus Christ and Latter-day Saints land arm. And so, it really has some significant members that can help affect some good and help us plan good.
All right. Thank you.
Just one more comment, if I can. I'd just like to thank the staff and all of our employees for the awesome job you do, especially the job you did, Norm, on getting information to these people. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. I have one thing. Last Wednesday night, Kim and I had the opportunity to go to the veterans' dinner, and I missed that last year because they didn't have it, and it's one of the highlights of me being the mayor, to be able to go and have a dinner with them folks and enjoy their company. It doesn't matter what side of the politics we're on, they treat you with respect. And I'm one that, just being the mayor, that I can take some heat sometime because I don't know whether it's a lack of respect or what, but I never have to worry about that with the veterans, and I was honored to be there. Thank you hard. Who are you gonna turn that commandership over to? You gonna keep going?
There's not too many volunteers, sir.
Well, you do a great job. That's all I have. I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion, my Councilman Miller, is there a second?
A second.
Say, my Councilman Hathaway, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Say nay. Thank you. Why didn't you say nay? You too much wanted to keep going.
I said aye.
Oh, did you? Bet you didn't make a motion. Oh, did you? Bet you didn't make a motion.